All right, welcome everyone to the first Judiciary Committee hearing of the second year of the biennium. We've been doing this Zoom stuff so long now that I think it's all pretty much self-explanatory. I would just say that if we have a catastrophic technical failure, we'll try again tomorrow, January 26th, in this room 016 at 9:31 a.m. Hopefully we won't. As most of you are probably aware, we do have a two-minute time limit on testimony, both for Zoom and for in-person. So when you hear the little buzzer go off, please wrap it up right away. Since it's our first hearing of the year, I'm going to just go ahead and let my fellow senators introduce themselves and start down on my right, if you don't mind.
Senator Dorsey and Buena Ventura.
Hi, everyone. Happy New Year. I'm Brandon Elafante.
Mike Gabbert. Aloha.
And I'm Carl Rhodes. All right, so we'll move on. We'll go to the first bill, which is, we're taking up a House bill, House Bill 129. This provides that a mandatory recount shall occur when the difference in votes cast is equal or less than 100 votes, or one quarter of 1%, whichever is less. So on HB 129, first testifier is Scott Nago, Chief Elections Officer.
We'll send out a review testimony in support. It'll be happy after your vote.
In support. Okay, thank you. Next, we have Holly Plackett, with Vega Women Voters, in support. Brent Colbus in opposition. Julie Schaus in opposition. Greg in opposition. Sam Schaus in opposition. Corinne Solomon in opposition. Andrew Crossland in opposition. That's all the testimony. That's everybody who signed up to testify on HB 129. Anyone else wish to testify on HB 129? Seeing on members' questions.
Questions for Chief Elections Officer, Mr. Nago.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Nago. Good morning. I did read through your testimony, and I noticed you had five business days, and that accounts for staff to do that. How did you come up with that? Was from that from prior experiences, or?
So, as background, when this bill, when the original bill was passed, this was before elections by mail, so we could actually do that in the amount, I believe it's 48 hours in the time it was. However, since the passing of elections by mail and going through all these recounts, it is a struggle. It's not impossible, but it is harder for us to actually meet that statutory deadline.
So five days is more comfortable.
Yeah, and we wouldn't take the whole five days. We would try and finish it as soon as we can, because we want finality too. But it's just, we don't want to be accused of not following the law if we don't meet it.
Thank you, Mr. Nago.
Members of other questions? I have one. So in terms of the, I think the current law says it has whichever is greater, 100 or quarter of 1%, whichever is greater, is that correct?
Correct.
So is that, have you been getting a lot of recounts that you felt like were unnecessary because the margin was wide?
So we've done, in the two, past two election sequences, the bill has passed, or the law went into effect, we've done 11 recounts. Only one of them actually met the threshold for percentage. Everything else is within 100 votes.
Okay. So what you're, basically the argument then is that in a race where not very many people vote, then if you win by 58, that's a fairly substantial margin.
Correct. Like the example I gave where it's an 87-vote difference, but it's 6.3% difference.
It's not likely to be overturned. Okay. All right. Thank you. Other questions, Senator Waugh? You look like you wanted to ask a question, but no. Okay. I'm fine.
You guys are going to change anything either.
Okay. I think that's it on that one, then. We'll move on to, thank you very much. Thanks for coming down. HB 470 requires providers of no-cost emergency shelter and related services to maintain separation for unrelated adults and minor children. First up on HB 470 is the Attorney General, Ann Lopez, or her designee on this. Oh, no, you're here. Okay. Morning.
Good morning, Chair Rose, members of the committee. My name is Margaret Leong. I'm Deputy Attorney General. The Office of the Attorney General has submitted comments on this bill, as contained in our testimony, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next is Kathy Betts, Director for Department of Human Services. Maybe on, no, no.
They're not available.
In person, come on in.
Hello, Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Daisy Hartsfield. I'm the Administrator for the Social Services Division on behalf of our Director Kathy Betts. The department did submit testimony. We do appreciate the intent of the bill, but we do have some concerns regarding its current draft. One of those concerns is the requirement not to notify the department if there is a youth there. So there's concerns that if we are unaware that a youth is in such a shelter placement, that we'll be unable to make services that they're entitled to available to them. The other concern has to do with providers being unlicensed. It's not necessarily an issue of being unlicensed, but as you all know, if a provider is not one that the community trusts or has established a relationship without that licensing requirement, there's no way to really monitor or oversee them. And if there is a complaint, there's very little incentive to put a corrective plan into place because there's no concern about losing a license. So that's part of the concern, if there is no licensing requirement. And again, we're not saying one needs to exist, but that's one of the advantages of having a provider licensed by the state. So just wanted to add, and also available for any questions.
Great. Thank you. Next is Judith Clark, Executive Director, Hawaii Youth Services Network. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, members of committee. I'm Judith Clark, Executive Director of Hawaii Youth Services Network, a statewide coalition of youth-serving organizations. We are providing comments on this bill. HYSN has coordinated a statewide youth homelessness partnership since 1981. We strongly support efforts to provide, ensure that minors have access to safe and appropriate shelter and other housing arrangements. We do believe, though, that organizations providing emergency shelter for minors should be licensed as child placing or child caring organizations by the Department of Human Services. We recognize that during the waiver period that took place due to the COVID emergency, that there were high-quality services provided by a shelter that was not DHS licensed. However, we have concerns that other providers could take advantage of the exemption to provide services that are not of the quality that our homeless youth need and deserve. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thanks very much. Next is Carla Hauser, Executive Director for Residential Youth Services and Empowerment. Good morning.
Good morning, Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Carla Hauser. I'm the Executive Director for RISE, which is Residential Youth Services and Empowerment. We provide social services, supportive services, to young people ages 14 to 24 who are experiencing homelessness. Many of these young people are coming out of systems, 18- to 24-year-olds, whether it's foster care, whether it's residential treatment facilities. Oftentimes, there is a funding cliff at the age of 18. Young people are now experiencing homelessness. We also see roughly a dozen young people per year who are under the age of 18, who, for a number of different reasons, have not been successful in child welfare and foster care. Most of these youth are 16, 17 years old and have jumped from placement to placement to placement. Oftentimes, there's turmoil in the families, and rather than have these families be engaged with the child welfare system, we simply want to be able to provide a safe place for those young people to land, to have a roof over their head, and to be surrounded by vetted, background-checked adults, and still work in conjunction with the child welfare system so that we can reengage these young people with whatever services that they need. I don't think that community providers are opposed to be licensed. The concern is that oftentimes, within the licensing process, the end goal is to either reunite them with family or put them into the foster care system. And for many of these young people, they really just want to start their journey on adulthood. They really just want to finish school and get a good-paying job and move on in their life, and that's what we're here for. So we look forward to working with DHS to come up with some sort of administrative rule change so that community providers can also help lessen. We know that child welfare services are overworked and overburdened. We're here as a lifeline to help support them. So thank you. I'm here for questions if needed.
Thank you very much. Next up is Sydney Story, Opportunity Youth Action Hawaii. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rose, Vice Chair Gabbert, members of the committee. My name is Sydney Story. I'm a second-year law student at the William S. Richardson School of Law here at UH Manoa, and I'm here on behalf of Opportunity Youth Action Hawaii, where a collaboration of organizations and individuals committing to reducing the harmful effect of incarceration on youth. We seek to eliminate youth houselessness through the promotion and funding of holistic -
I'm going to interrupt just one second. Can people in the back here, can you pull the mic? Thanks.
It's not better. And funding of holistic and culturally informed approaches among agencies that serve Hawaii's youth. And we are very happy to see this bill reintroduced this session, and we stand in support. I know there are concerns about licensure in the amendments, and you've just heard from someone who is much more qualified than I am to talk about that issue, but I just wanted to emphasize a few points from our written testimony, mainly that a huge percentage of homeless youth in Hawaii experience some form of abuse, and that's over 75%. So allowing shelter access provides a sense of stability that is essential to their mental and physical well-being. Stability provides a form of shelter, safety, and security, and housing access is linked to things like better educational outcomes, allowing youth to regularly attend school and focus on their studies. Stable shelter access increases employment opportunities. By providing a permanent address, it reduces vulnerability to exploitation and abuse, provides more effective access to support services, and promotes community integration. So keep it short and sweet, and just wanted to emphasize that access to shelter is a fundamental right that really addresses the basic needs of homeless youth and provides a stable platform for them to overcome challenges, pursue education and employment, and ultimately break that cycle of homelessness. So I ask the committee, please support.
Thank you. Next is Carolyn Galloio, President, Rainbow Family 808. Good morning.
Thank you, Senator Rhodes, and all the members of this fine committee. I am the president and founder of Rainbow Family 808. We reach out to those in need, regardless of age, ethnicity, all the protected classes. And I'm here today to speak for Acacia Brown. She's a young lady, 21-years-old, that died on the streets when there were no open places for her. She had shifted around, she became a street person. She ended up into many illicit acts to survive. This bill is so important, and we can't wait. She died. I am speaking for all of those who are on the verge of getting involved in life-changing actions that lead to their death. She's not the only one, and she won't be the last one. Her hope is with you, and I represent her and all the other unaccompanied homeless youth that die on the streets. They die emotionally, they die physically, mentally, and all the other ways a person can end their life. And they don't end it because they want to. It's usually taken from them. But you can make the difference. Get this bill passed and engage, fund it. By not funding this, by not passing this, this is in violation of ageism, because the adults have shelters and safe places to sleep and eat.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much for listening to me, and don't forget, Acacia Brown. She's on my Facebook page.
Next is another Galloio, Michael Jr., for Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii, on Zoom maybe?
They're not available on Zoom.
In support, Efren Veronas for Oahu Youth Action Board Partners in Care, also on Zoom.
They're not available on Zoom either, Chair.
In support, Katie Scott, Youth Homelessness Director for National Homelessness Law Center. In support, Michael Galloio Sr., Secretary for Rainbow Family 808, in support. That's everybody who signed up for HB 470. Does anyone else wish to testify on HB 470? Yep, come on up. Good morning.
Chair, Vice Chair, and the Judiciary Committee, Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES. And this bill was initiated last year. The twin bill, Senate Bill 129, was deferred in the Conference Committee and not revived this year, or whatever the correct terminology is. The twin bill was not resurrected this year. I obsessively researched this, and I read every committee report and listened to all the hearings, but I did not read every testimony, though. So I just wanted to be up to speed with y'all in this conversation, and the main points from this series of hearings were, one, for best practices, we should not limit the provider to the number of children served in an emergency minor shelter. Right now, the number is five. The limit is five. From the Chapter 346 of HRS, the definitions of child caring institutions. Two, licensure requirements are too strict. Shelters like RISE are not licensed, and yet the representatives made a trip to RISE and said the shelter should qualify to serve as a minor emergency shelter. Three, DHS and unlicensed shelters have to work together to find a balance. DHS has to go by federal funding requirements as per the Federal Act. The Runaway Homeless Youth Program mentioned in the committee reports and in DHS's final testimony in the Senate Judiciary, where the bill was deferred. DHS is basically saying the federal funding rules limits the provider as a contractor with a state entity because of liability issues. And yet, the point of providing as a minor emergency shelter separate from DHS and CWS is to provide a separate pathway away from the judiciary and court systems and the child juvenile system shelters. Other options for emergency minor shelters during times of domestic abuse, violence, and adolescent rape. I think the end result is for DHS to contract with providers to get federal grants, and the goal is to get the provider on a federal list of shelters. I provided links in my report from the Federal Department of Health and Human Services website, the basic information about qualifications for the federal -
Thank you very much. Your time has expired.
- Youth Runaway Program.
Does anyone else wish to testify on HB 470? HB 470. Seeing on members' questions? Senator Sanbuenaventura.
Daisy Hartsfield, come on up. Okay, two things. One is, how many emergency shelters does this bill apply to? Is it only RISE?
That I am currently aware of. I know it will impact RISE in a positive way, and we actually do support the services that have been provided by RISE. I don't know of any other shelters that would be impacted by this. And again, this is along with our testimony, that if it is a provider that the community is aware of or has a relationship with, and the trust has been built, this would be a good bill. But if there's a provider that is unknown to the community, there's the possibility that might have some negative consequences. So that's, I can find out how many shelters there are.
Okay, so right now, we're looking at RISE. And basically, if the bill doesn't go through, because it's an emergency shelter, it's going, RISE will still be able to apply for any RFPs, right?
If they're licensed.
They're not licensed, is what you're saying? Because it allows for?
Correct, which is why they would need to seek private funding. At the time, they were receiving government funding. It's my understanding it was when the emergency proclamation was in effect, which is how we were able to provide monies.
So if we, instead of repealing it, because I have concerns that unlicensed shelters will just pop up, because otherwise it would make -
That's a concern the department has as well. Understood.
I mean, obviously, they're taking care of people. They're taking care of kids. How long should we allow for a more, to see whether or not there will be licensed providers that may fill in the void? Or allow for RISE to get licensed? How many more years should we give them?
I don't have an answer for that, Senator.
Probably another five more years or so. I will call you.
Yeah, I don't have a -
Okay, the second thing I want to talk about is the amendment to this bill, which actually, to me, makes it more potentially problematic, is the removal of the separate sleeping areas between adults and just create a separation, which seems to me, it would like be, like a shower curtain would be a separation. I have a problem with that. I mean -
The department also has a concern with that as well. And that's part of the issue with getting licensed, is because there needs to be that physical -
Separate sleeping area between adults and -
Correct.
And young adults. Because they deal with young adults and not just minors.
Correct.
Okay, so may I follow up with, or?
Any other questions? If not, go ahead.
Okay, so -
All right, thank you.
I'm Carla Hauser. Come on up. So how many people, young adults and minors, do you care for?
We have the capacity in our emergency shelter to care currently for 20 young people ages 18 to 24. And prior to the sunset of this bill, on June 30th of 2023, we were providing care to unaccompanied minors, five at a time.
Okay. Why is it you can't go for, I mean, to get licensed? What's the problem?
Oftentimes, it relates to building spaces, those codes. We also work with people with colorful backgrounds and people who have -
Not any convictions?
Sometimes. People who have served their time and who are now before us.
Or may even be sex trafficking.
No, those are disqualifiers. So we are, we have federal funding that makes sure that the folks that we hire are vetted, but there are certain offenses sometimes that people have, that they committed when they were young people.
Okay, why is it that you need to, why is it that we are allowing a lesser separation, which is like a shower curtain? Instead of what the law requires of separate sleeping areas between adults and unaccompanied minors?
I would just want to make sure that this point is clear to the committee, that we already have unsheltered places where minors sleep. There are encampments, there are trap houses, they are couch surfing in exchange for that safety. And so by requiring that vetted community programs go through the same as you would as if you were providing shelter to 18- to 24-year-olds, if those processes are still in place, and we can operate a system that, like I said, is outside of child welfare in collaboration, walking alongside them, we have many youth who are coming from foster families, then the foster families aren't reporting them as missing. And I'm sure child welfare would want to know that, so that those resource dollars could be allocated elsewhere. So -
No, I understand you do a good service. My problem is state monies actually enabling a more dangerous condition for potentially sex trafficking victims, yeah. That's my concern.
And we currently -
And so if we don't, if we don't make it permanent, how long do you think, or do you think you will ever be certified?
We have come to the table to work with DHS on what those licensing requirements could look like for a community-based organization. And we are more than happy to sit down with DHS. Here's what we can agree to, here's what we can't, and just to have that conversation.
Do you think another five more years will allow you folks to be able to get licensed?
I sure hope, I hope we could get it done in five months.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Elafante.
Question, follow-up to Senator Sanbuenaventura. Thank you, Chair. You mentioned about the licensing part. So one hand, from what you just previously stated, is working with DHS. But on the other hand, you did mention about building code or requirements, which normally are at a county level. So has your organization or other organizations in the work that you do work with county on that? And how far along are you on progress in terms of looking at building codes?
We have eight sites across Oahu now that serve as transitional housing programs for young people. Those have gone through the normal processing for permitting and for the required group home settings that we have. So with the current campus that we're on, on state land, it does provide some challenges. And so we're not also opposed to moving a minor shelter off of state land to help reduce some of those concerns about liability. We're an open book, and we're here to work and find that solution. We know that there are a handful of young people that slip through the cracks, and we just want to be that safety net that provides that safe place for them, and then we can put them back into whatever services are available. But to sleep unsheltered in exchange for something, I feel confident that being able to sleep under full-time adult supervision, of caring, nurturing people, unconditional positive regard, that's the way to really help these young people move forward.
No, thank you for sharing that. And as a follow-up to that, so it seems like your main campus, which is on state land, that's not licensed?
Correct.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks. Anyone else? If not, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next bill. Which is HB 824 relating to medical release from Department of Public Safety Facilities, Department of Corrections Facilities. First up on this is Edmund Fred Queen, Chair of the White Pearling Authority.
White Pearling Authority stands on its written testimony supporting the intent -
Supports intent, okay. Next is Director Johnson with Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, and members of committee. I'm Tommy Johnson, the Director of Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. I'll just summarize my four-page testimony, if that's okay, but I would ask you to please look at it in detail. We already, while we support this bill, I wanted to just bring out a couple of points. We already have this program in HPA's Administrative Rules, Chapter 27 of Title 23, and our Corrections Policy, COR.10-1G-11 for medical releases. We have released 47 folks on medical release from 2016 to 2022. If this measure moves forward, we will add in the 23 numbers there. This measure doesn't solve the issue of guardianship. Oftentimes, it may get to the point where they can't make their own decisions, and they do need guardianship. We have tried, the other main concern is housing. Bob Merce has worked with us on a number of cases, and he can attest to the fact that housing is the big issue, the process is not the problem. Once our healthcare staff determine that someone needs to be considered for medical release, we get the medical release request to HPA right away. They notify the prosecutor's office. They can set up the request for ROM reduction to minimum, and then set up parole hearing almost immediately after that. That process may take five to seven days total. If we were to put this program as written in this measure, we would require an additional physician and an advanced practical nurse. I'm available for any questions. My -
Thank you very much. Next up is Linda Rich for Women's Prison Project, in support. Next is Robert Merce, on Zoom maybe?
They're unavailable on Zoom.
Okay, he's in opposition. Next is Carrie Anne Shiruta for the American Civil Liberties Union of Hawaii. Good morning.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Carrie Anne Shiruta, Policy Director on behalf of ACLU of Hawaii. We strongly support compassionate release as one, as a number of data-driven strategies to reduce the number of people in our jails and prisons. However, we do not support this measure. We would support this measure if you go back and adopt the original bill or HD1 for a number of reasons that Bob Merce has also outlined. I just want to highlight a few things, sort of from the outside, zooming out, looking in. This is not just our assessment, meaning the ACLU. Families Against Mandatory Minimums conducted a scope nationwide of compassionate release programs. Sadly, Hawaii received an F grade, due in part to our policy design, inconsistent rules, and lack of clarity. In stark contrast, states such as Colorado, Illinois, Rhode Island, and Massachusetts and DC earned an A. I think we're here as policymakers and community because we believe in solutions and best practices, and we should be aiming for the A. And we can do that by going back to the original bill or HD1. And we can do that by going back to the original bill or HD1. I also want to point out that the American Bar Association supports expanding and better utilizing compassionate release programs as an important step in making the prison system more humane and would also reduce the financial strain of mass incarceration places on states. To just quickly highlight some things in the bill, since Bob Merce could not be here, the bill as it's drafted does not have a reasonable timeframe. A number of people do not even apply for compassionate release because they do not have the ability to do so, maybe they need an advocate for them. But even for those who do, they could wait indefinitely. We need to have a reasonable timeframe codified in the measure. Second, the way that the bill is currently drafted is that it requires essentially a doctor to make the certification that they meet the criteria for release.
Your time is expired.
I'm sorry, thank you very much. Please hold this measure or go back to the original amendment. Thank you Senators.
Anyone else? That's all the, that's everyone who signed up for HB 824. Is anyone else wish to testify on HB 824? Okay, seeing none members' questions? Senator Elafante.
Hi Director, good morning. I did read through your testimony and Mr. Merce's testimony and hearing from the ACLU in terms of timeframe. So are you able to address some of the concerns that were raised in their testimonies?
Yes.
And if so, what would be your recommendation in terms of timeframes?
Well, I can tell you about the current process is the healthcare staff will go to the director and notify the director, they believe they have a patient who qualifies for medical release. And this is only for people who have not, whose minimum term has not expired yet. So if the director agrees, he will send that to the Chair of the HPA. And then the HPA has set up previously, as the administrator had set up a process where we notified the prosecutor's office and they waived the seven-day notification for a hearing. And we would send them case information, they would get back to us and then parole board would then schedule an administrative review for the ROM reduction to minimum. If they granted the ROM, they would immediately schedule the person for a parole consideration hearing. The prosecutor would have waived the seven-day notice so the hearing could take place almost immediately. That's how that process works. That's done all within a week to seven days at the most. And that's the process now. For those where the minimum term has expired and the person, next parole hearing is not for like 10 months. All we need to do then is request for medical reasons, the parole board consider granting the person an early parole hearing so they can consider the person for release. And these are for cases, in both cases for ROM and early releases where our physicians have determined that the needs of the person would be best served in the community and/or the person is terminally ill and will be most likely deceased in six months.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Senator Sanwana Ventura, go ahead.
Okay, so thank you Director Johnson, you heard ACLU's concern. Is there, do you have any preference between HD2 and HD1? I mean, don't you think you should have a time limit to make a decision?
If you do, if you do add in a time limit, the time limit should be no more than a 14-day process. Because a lot of these guys are really sick. But again, I caution, the issue is not getting a decision to get them out, it is the appropriate housing that is the problem.
Yes, no, I understand. But you don't mind having a time limit put on?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Members have other questions? Thank you very much Director. Okay, I think I'm ready to move on. Let's go to Senate Bill for Change Your Pace, SB 2181, requires the judiciary to increase the hourly fees, mileage, reimbursement rates, and computer time compensation rate for court interpreters. First up on SB 2181 is Debbie Toulon de Silva, Equality and Access Coordinator for the judiciary in support. Next is Afarak Domruin, Executive Director for the Office of Language Access.
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair. Welcome to the Office of Language Access. Thank you for participating.
Good, in support, thank you. Next is Kelton Walton, Prosecuting Attorney for Hawaii County in support. Next is Maria Ralajai, Ralohai, testifying for Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. Good morning.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, my name is Maria Ralohai with the Coalition or Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. We submitted written testimony in support of SB 2181. And I just wanted to emphasize that court interpreters bridge access to justice for a limited English proficiency community. And I also wanted to note that, you know, when the court interpreters are not available, their hearings sometimes may be delayed and in criminal trial or in criminal court, that means that the defendants stay in jail for longer. And I don't have recent data or numbers for you folks, but according to the Department of Public Safety's 2020 fiscal year report, they stated that the cost for incarceration per inmate, per facility, per day is $219. So the proposed increase for court interpreters may be less than, you know, what it would for them to stay in prison. So I just kind of want, I just wanted to urge all of you to pass the bill and to raise the court interpreter's fee for them to have a living wage that aligns with the local costs of living as well as the expertise that they bring to our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is W. Alec. For One Stop Center for Micronesians on Big Island in support. Grace Larson in support on Zoom maybe?
They're unavailable on Zoom.
Okay, also in support, Hidayuki Takahashi Court Interpreter in support. And then we have, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19 individuals all in support. And so at this point, if there's anybody else who would like to testify on SB 2181, please come forward or over here on Zoom. Okay, come on up.
Morning again. Good morning, Angela Melody Young from CARES in support. So we need court interpreters to represent the marginalized, vulnerable, weak, and demographics and cultures that are below the poverty income threshold. So from the American Immigration Council in 2018, 266,000 immigrants, foreign-born individuals, made up of 19% of the population in Hawaii. There were about 114,000 women, 105,000 men, and 15,000 children who were immigrants. Court interpreters are often required to drive, sometimes for hours, to distant courthouses to provide interpretation services that are critical for a defendant with limited English proficiency to exercise the defendant's constitutional and statutory right to represent themselves in court. The purpose of this act is to require the judiciary to increase the hourly fees, mileage, reimbursement rate, and commuter time compensation rate for court interpreters to reflect the significant increase in the cost of living in Hawaii. And professional interpretation is one of the most lucrative, growing, and diverse fields. As the state's population becomes increasingly diverse, the demand for professional certified interpreters in the courts has increased over the past few decades. And so CARES is in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on SB 2181? If not, members' questions?
Is there someone from judiciary?
Anyone from judiciary? Come on up. Senator Gabbard, go ahead please.
Yes, I see that the program was established back in 2007. And the rate that interpreters are being paid now is the same as 2007, is that correct? So 17 years later, we're looking at, why did it take so long?
That is correct. The hourly rate that the interpreters are being paid now is exactly the same as it was in 2007. We have, over the years, tried to add other kinds of incentives like an exemption from parking tickets for interpreters similar to jurors. But it's true that this is long overdue.
I see in the testimony that there was a study that was done, a report in 2022. So are these the recommend, the price rate, is that the recommendation from that report?
The recommendations from that report are included in the judiciary's supplemental budget request, which is the $530,000 request.
Thank you, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Other questions? If not, thanks very much. We'll go ahead and move on to the next bill, which is SB 2107. This allows the Attorney General to appoint a special counsel to assume the Attorney General's powers and responsibility over an investigation of a personal matter when the investigation or prosecution may present a conflict of interest for the AG. First up on 2107 is Robin Chun, Deputy Attorney General, in person. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Robin Chun. I'm a deputy in the Department of the Attorney General. The Department of the Attorney General opposes Senate Bill 2107 for the reasons that we've stated in our written testimony and asks that the committee defer this measure.
Okay, thank you. Next is Michael E. K. M. Olber, comments. And that's everybody who signed up for SB 2107. Would anyone else like to testify on SB 2107? If not, members' questions? I have a question for Ms. Chun. So we're, I mean, this bill, it's just giving you an additional power that you are not required to use if you don't feel like it. So what's the disadvantage of having an additional mechanism for, what would it be an unusual situation presumably?
The Department views this bill as unnecessary. There's already a statute, we revise statute section 28-8 that authorizes the Attorney General to retain special counsel where necessary and appropriate and to perform such duties that are defined by the appointment. So this really, this bill in short is unnecessary. In addition to that statutory authorization, the Attorney General may call upon the prosecuting attorney offices in the various counties. And there's also the Department of Law Enforcement, which has recently been created. So we don't think that this bill is necessary, that it doesn't add anything.
I understand that, but does it hurt anything to have that additional power? You don't have to, the Attorney General doesn't have to use it if she doesn't want to.
Well, I mean, it doesn't hurt anything, but it isn't necessary.
Okay, thank you. All right, other questions? Senator Sanwana Ventura?
Yes, so my understanding of this bill was because of the Maui wildfires and Attorney General going to the public saying that she wants to investigate. If those investigatory powers actually point to some State Department or State Agency who has maybe stonewalled or vice versa, I mean, don't you think? Don't you think a special counsel should have been, should have been like appointed to like oversee, to oversee, to ensure that there is no conflict of interest? I mean, or you're saying that it's already there? And if it's, if so, why wasn't it used if we don't, I mean, otherwise there's no need for this bill?
Well, I'm not sure that there, it has been determined that a special counsel was necessary in the Hawaii fire situation if you're talking about the appointment of the investigator.
Yeah, but you see, that's the problem, right? If a special counsel wasn't appointed, would the Attorney General look upon itself and the state agencies as critically as we need them to determine who the players are regarding the culpability of the Maui fires and the aftermath thereafter?
What I understand about the situation, and I wasn't involved in the decision to retain the investigation entity, was that it would be an entirely objective third party who would look at the situation and try to determine, I believe, some degree of fault, where, what caused the fires. But this was supposed to be, is it supposed to be an independent third-party investigator? So I don't think there's been any determination that there's a conflict there. I may be wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, members? Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to SB 2138. This requires that each vote cast for a question on a ballot for the ratification of a constitutional minimum be counted as negative only if the ballot properly indicates that the vote is in the negative. First up on 2138 is Reese Nakamura, Deputy Attorney General. Officer here, morning.
Good morning Chair Rhodes and members of the committee, I'm Deputy Attorney General Reese Nakamura. We previously submitted some comments to this bill. And while we don't, there do not appear to be legal problems with the bill, we do want to clarify that, the distinction between casting votes and tallying votes as required by Article 17 of the Constitution and the Hawaii Supreme Court of AFL-CIO Hawaii versus Yushina. Under both the case and the Constitution, there's a requirement that for a constitutional amendment or a constitutional convention to occur, there must be, it's really a two-part test. There's a requirement that, of course, the, in order for a measure to, amendment to be approved, it has to garner more yes votes than no votes, so it has to have that majority. But at the same time, in those situations for constitutional amendments and conventions, they also have to, those yes votes have to have had the majority of the cast votes, the total cast votes. For example, in the Yushina case, the measure, the constitutional amendment did not pass because it, although it had more yes votes than no votes, there was, it had less than the majority of total cast votes because there are so many blank votes and so many overvotes that it didn't meet that second test. So what we've, we've provided some, I guess we took a stab at some language to provide. And looking on it under the bill, actually, I think our provided language may actually fit better at the end, starting on line 13. And we also want to change the last word of the language to tally, to cast instead of tally because that's the distinction I made between cast and tally. We want to make that clear. Also, in the proposed language of this bill.
I'm sorry, your time's expired.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hopefully you can stay around for questions.
Yes, I will. And I will answer the last part.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Next is Michael Goyor Jr., Chair of Stonewall Caucus, the Democratic Party of Hawaii, on Zoom maybe?
No, they're unavailable on Zoom.
In support. Brett Colless in support and then 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12. About 17 individuals in opposition. Anyone else wish to testify on SB 2138? 2138, okay, seeing none members' questions? Yeah, if you don't mind coming back, I do have. So just to, just to double check, so basically you're saying the Constitution is currently written two things, it's not just you got to get more votes of the people that actually opined on the question, you actually get, you have to get 50% of, at least 50% plus one of the total, I guess it's a tally that's, it's a cast, okay?
Yes.
So the cast includes under, it includes ballots that were submitted, but the person didn't vote on that particular item.
Correct. And let me just give you an example under Yushina. In that case, if you ever look at the case at the end, the conclusion uses the numbers. There were 163,869 people who voted for a measure. And there were also, which was the yes votes. But that yes vote, the 163, were less than the total cast of 369, so.
Are you aware of any other state that counts? Are you aware of any other state that counts their conems this way? I mean, it seems very strange to me that, you know, if you're running for office, the overages and the underages just don't count.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Senator, I'm not aware of any other state that does it that way. But that's the Yoshina case.
Okay, understood.
One other thing I wanted to mention too, as far as the change.
I'm going to go ahead and move on. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Unless there's other questions? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
That brings us to the end of the agenda. Members, if you're okay, we can just do decision-making in public here. Let's do this a little out of order, so. For. Let's see which one is it? Relating to minors, HB 470. So Senator Sam Bonaventure, this measure came out of your committee. And so I'm.
You have my concurrence if you're going to change.
Well, if you, that's my question.
Because I do want to change it, obviously.
Do you want to move it forward? That's the real question.
No, no, it's up to you.
Okay. My inclination would be, okay, here's what I have. So the bill as currently written would, in section 2, remove the sunset date. So that's, that's, that's all moot because we didn't get to it last year. So the first amendment would be to make it permanent, to put it in and make it permanent. And then the separation, we would leave the separate, let me just be sure I'm getting this right, the separation.
Keep it separate, sleeping areas?
Well, this is just. Yeah, so. We separate, separate. Let me just discuss it with, so do you want, the separation, the separation issue was, came up, we had originally thought about just leaving it as separation, but if you want to put back in separate sleeping areas. Okay, so we'll amend it to put back in the language on separate sleeping areas. And. Oh, okay, so five years from the enactment of the bill, is that okay? All right. So instead of making it permanent, we'll just say five years from the, from the, whenever the bill goes into effect.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, so, okay. So yes, just to, just to doubly clarify, since the old bill has expired, we're, we have to put in new language to cover the timeframe.
Thank you.
And then finally, what would you like for an effective date? Do you want to make it, you want to send it back clean or do you want to?
Yeah, you can send it back clean.
Okay, so we'll put an effective upon approval then.
Because the period had already expired.
Okay. Any questions on that recommendation? If not, Vice Chair for the vote on HB 470.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 470 with amendments. Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Elafante.
Aye.
Senator Sam Bonaventure.
Aye.
Senator Owa.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we'll. So we'll go back to the top of the agenda of HB 129. This provides that mandatory recount should occur when the difference in vote cast is equal to or less than 100 votes or 1/4 of 1% of the total number of votes cast for the contest, whichever is less. So the recommendation here is to pass it unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair on HB 129, unamended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 129 unamended. The members present, are there any no votes or reservations?
No vote.
Noting the no vote from Senator Owa, the measure passes.
Thank you. We'll move on to HB 824 relating to medical release. So the recommendation here, and I do have prior concurrence from the Public Safety Chair, I was looking at the wrong sheet of paper though. So we'll add several deadlines to the medical release program and require the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation to submit a report on an inmate's request for medical release to the Hawaii Public Paroleing Authority within 20 days of receiving the request. Require HPA to hold a hearing within 10 days of receiving the department's report on the medical release request. And we'll require HPA to grant or deny the request within two days of the hearing. We'll add a requirement to Department of the, Department of, sorry, the Director of the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation appoint an advocate for any inmate who requests medical release and is unable due to incapacitation or dehabilitation, I'm sorry, debilitation to advocate on the inmate's own behalf. And we'll delete the requirement that a request for medical release made by an inmate include a recommendation from a physician. Technical amendments as well, and we'll correct references to the Department of, because of the splitting up of the organization to make the references to Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation where necessary. And we'll make it effective upon approval. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HB 24, HD2 with amendments. The members present, are there any no votes or reservations?
No vote.
Noting the no vote from Senator Owa, the measure passes.
Okay, thank you. Next up is SB 2181, requires the judiciary to increase the hourly fees, mileage, reimbursement rates, and computer time compensation rate for court interpreters. The recommendation here is to pass with only technical amendments. And we'll note on the committee report that the judiciary has requested 530,000 in its supplemental budget for this item, but that, in the committee's opinion, it's probably not enough money to get the job done. Questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 2181 with amendments. The members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is SB 2107. This allows the Attorney General to appoint a special counsel in certain circumstances. I hear the, I hear the Attorney General's testimony, but I, it seems to me like it's, would, could conceivably be a useful tool for the AG at some point, maybe not this one, but maybe a future one. So recommendation is to pass as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB 2107 unamended. The members present, any no votes or reservations?
No.
Noting the no vote from Senator Owa, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next is SB 2138. I think at this point, I'm just going to defer it. I don't think there's a way forward without a constitutional amendment, but we have, it's a JDC single, so we have plenty of time to bring it back if necessary. So that one's deferred. All right, members, and then everybody here, thanks for coming. And we will have another one tomorrow, a little earlier, I believe, 9:30 tomorrow. We're adjourned.